Good afternoon. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem, and I call to order this committee of the whole meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city clerk, please, to call the roll.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. We're all present and accounted for. Going to spend some time this afternoon looking at our capital improvement plan, needs met and unmet, or funded and unfunded, I should say, rather. So I will turn it over to City Manager Lee Garrity, if you would. Start us off, please, Mr. Garrity.
Good afternoon, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the city council.
Good afternoon.
Today, what we have before you is a large list of unmet needs, of capital needs for our community. As we've talked about before, probably in 2023, I think there's probably a strong, strong need to consider another bond referendum. But this is, we're seeking guidance from you for the current year coming up, the 22, 23 year, with some limited resources that we have. One of the things that Mr. Tesh will focus on is the amount of maintenance needs we have. A lot of our infrastructure is aging out at the same time. All of you know that because we have stormwater devices, public and private, we've got roads, bridges, et cetera, park equipment, all of it starting to age out. So there's a lot of, lot of demands, a lot of needs, as well as a lot of things for quality of life that the council and the community has identified. So today, we just don't want any decisions, we just want to think, seek some guidance from councils as a whole. We'll be back with the budget with some, hopefully some recommendations that that'll work. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tesh.
Mr. Tesh?
I'm going to remove this at the podium.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and members of the city council. It's my pleasure to be in front of you today to talk about the capital improvement plan in a draft form and much of the unfunded needs that show up, will show up both in the document and that we have talked about in the last months. In terms of an agenda for today, let me make sure that this, there we go. We'll talk about the draft capital improvement plan, so those items that budget staff currently has as funded. This is a meeting that is taking place a little in advance of our normal capital improvement process. Normally, you would have the book presented in May and we would, would run through capital needs at that point, but as the manager said, looking for some additional direction. So we'll show you the draft funding list that includes a lot of maintenance priorities and then have those discussions about the unfunded needs and what we might show in the book as it comes to you in May as part of budget development. There are two sections of unfunded requests in, in this presentation and in the accompanying documentation. One of them is a list of requests from departments, so we normally reach out to departments and we get a lot of those requests. And then a second is based on the series of conversations that we had on one-on-one meetings with council members, and so those are identified as other community needs, but are things that we heard directly from the mayor and city council that were not necessarily represented in what departments may have submitted as part of their funding strategies. As the city manager alluded, the last thing that we're going to talk about are some of the available funding strategies. So we'll show you what budget is proposing with current resources and then talk about the, the potential for additional limited obligation bond issuance in, in the, or at least to authorize that as part of the budget process. And as Mr. Garrity alluded to, additional discussions can take place later regarding bond referenda in the future as well for general obligation debt. So I'm sure you have, have seen the myriad of tables of numbers and data that are in this presentation. I want to apologize on the front end for just copious amounts of data. I have broken it up with a series of pictures. Will do my best to avoid going through this line by line and really talk at a high level about the decision points that can be made from these, but we have an overview of expenditures for the draft capital plan by strategic focus area and then also by funding source. So I'll stop at the funding sources and talk about some of the things that we're doing a little differently as part of this draft capital plan. We do have individual projects listed in here. It is not the intent of this meeting to go through those projects one by one, can bring back any additional information you have on individual projects in terms of design and scope and where staff is with them, but really trying to hover at a higher level in terms of the policy decisions around what types of projects to fund. We also will provide, as necessary, with the capital plan, a list of all of the projects by ward so that you know where they're located at. As you know, many of these projects you'll see will say recreation, resurfacing, or something to that effect. There may be three or four locations for that. We can bring back all of the individual locations for the projects as well. So at a very high level, I want to remind everyone that we normally do two-thirds bond issuances in even numbered years. So when you look at what we're going to call the draft capital budget for FY '23, it is not a two-thirds bond year, so you do see higher increases in general government projects in '24, '26, and '28, and we'll get into that into the details. From a total perspective here, as is always the case, the healthy environment section of the capital plan dominates the expenditures. That is because our water sewer and solid waste funds, capital improvement plans are included in those. We are including that in the summary information, but a majority of this presentation will exclude those types of enterprise funds. Those decisions will be recommended by the Utilities Commission and ultimately will come back in May for your approval as part of the budget. So we will be looking at the '23 budget as well as the capital plan for the five years after that. I will note here, moving to the, to the revenue side, as I said, you can see at the top that two-thirds bond funding takes place in '24, '26, and '28. We use that almost exclusively for capital maintenance, and you'll see a majority of this programmed in our recreation and transportation area, areas for rec center maintenance, parks maintenance, street resurfacing, and, and general capital maintenance. I will note a few things that are a little different in this part of the draft plan. So if you look at that second revenue source, you'll see general fund balance at $5.5 million. We'll show you in the details in here, the Budget Performance Management Department is going to recommend using general fund balance for several projects that are what we consider to be immediate maintenance needs of sorts that are above and beyond what we can fund with two-thirds. We showed you an early budget forecast where we would be adding a relatively significant amount of money to fund balance at year end, so appropriating some of that in '23 for a few maintenance priorities. I will note those specifically as we get to them. Going a little further down the list, we'll also note Powell Bill. If you look in FY '23, that amount is nearly $4.6 million. There's a little bit of fund balance in the Powell Bill Fund, that is our state street aid share. We're going to appropriate some of that money that's just sitting in reserves to take care of one specific project, and then going forward, that number of $2.11 million is a little higher than what you would have seen in prior years. The General Assembly did some retooling to Powell Bill funding across the state, and we netted about $1 million a year, so annually. We will show using that specifically for street resurfacing, but wanted to note that that, that revenue source has changed. So we will talk about these. If you look at the, the capital plan each year, it's sorted by service area. We're going to talk about it by department. It's a little easier here in terms of department requests, to think of it that way. Sometimes the difference between which departments are handling things inside service areas, but you see, again, not going to touch on things like water and sewer and solid waste specifically, and we will come back during budget development with things related to WISTA as well. So first on the list is recreation. Again, what you see here, this is the two-thirds bond funding list. We don't issue two-thirds or, or don't approve two-thirds in odd years, so nothing in '23, which is the upcoming budget year. But as you see here, roughly $13.7 million over the course of the six-year planning window, all of these really looking at, at addressing maintenance needs that were part of the Recreation Deferred Maintenance Assessment that was completed several years ago. So facility lighting renovation, greenway resurfacing, and you'll see additional greenway projects on the next page that go beyond resurfacing, that are string bank restoration and renovation projects, improvements to Salem Lake, tennis court resurfacing, and, and on down the list. Again, a majority of these are taking care of the assets that we currently have, not developing new assets and not significantly adding to the, the future maintenance costs from an operating budget perspective. Moving on to the next page, so when we showed that roughly $5.5 million in general fund balance, these were projects that we were not able to get into the plan based on prioritization with just the two-thirds funding. The top two up there totaling more than $3 million are renovations to current greenways, so the Virginia Newell Massey Greenway Improvement Project, as well as Muddy Creek. We do have a representative picture on the next page, and what I'll do is I'll kind of scroll down, and I'll apologize that this may be difficult for the public to see, but it is a, a map, and then overlaid over top of that are some of the issues with the greenway. I would draw your attention to what is the, on the top level, the second one from the left, and if you can see that, that is the stream bank having eroded directly into the greenway itself, causing its closure. So the funding that we are identifying for that is to fix that stream bank, do a restoration project, and then reopen that section of the greenway. Same thing with Muddy Creek, having stream bank issues there and needing to do a similar project in order to keep that section of the greenway open. The two other projects there, much smaller, maintenance issues, the Polo Recreation Center had a water intrusion issue, so there's waterproofing here, and the budget already includes money to replace the gym floors as were necessary per that water intrusion, and then the Haynes Town Playground replacement. I believe that playground is no longer usable after a recent safety check, so trying to get that back open as quickly as we can. So again, that's a little different. We don't normally do general fund balance appropriations in capital planning, but because we have access to it and have a few projects that are higher on the list, that's what we're including in the draft capital plan. Also, feel free to cut me off at any point with, with questions. Moving down to, to public safety, and it says fire department on there because a majority of the requests that you see here are related directly to the fire department. Public safety facility renewal is not specific to the fire department, but oftentimes ends up being used predominantly at the fire stations, as some of the district police offices get a little older from their renovations, will probably start to see capital needs at those as well. That is really kind of just the funding mechanism from a capital perspective for things that go wrong, roof replacements, HVACs, major systems, plumbing, building envelope, those types of things. Again, I won't go through all of these one by one. I will notice the two, or draw your attention to the two things that are funded from general fund balance in the middle, fire gear washing equipment, so we are recommending over the course of a couple of years to do washers, dryers, and extractors at the fire stations, which allows those hazardous materials on their turnout gear to be washed off in a commercial setting so that they don't have to wash it with other normal clothes or at home. That project will require a couple of years' worth of funding. Different stations have different needs in terms of how to accommodate those machines. And then a replacement of the underground fuel tank and pump station at number one, that's just an asset that has reached its useful life and needs to be replaced. The fire apparatus replacement, although we show it in the capital plan, what you, the amounts you see here are the acquisition cost, lease payments for those through municipal leasing, you'll see in the operating budget when we come back in May. Two things here in transportation, again, general fund balance. There was a conversation that took place with these, and I can't remember if it was at Finance Committee or Public Works recently regarding street lighting, but DOT has some needs to replace street lighting in multiple sections of 52 MLK Peters Creek Parkway and another location, but that $600,000 represents the requests to replace those streetlights that they need replaced. The amounts for traffic calming and traffic safety are our normal amounts that we put in every year for those types of projects from motor vehicle privilege tax. So again, looking at maintenance priorities in terms of field operations, we have on here additional bridge design, a little bit of money for bridge replacement, that $300,000 is to plug a gap in one of the bridges where the scope is a little above what we originally thought it was. You see additional money for priority bridge maintenance, that is to try and keep the bridges from needing to be replaced. We do have some pictures of what that looks like as well. And then obviously, street resurfacing has two funding sources. This is showing the two-thirds bond funding where we do $1.5 million every other year. We are showing the West Lakeview Drive Bridge Replacement. This $550,000 in the draft plan is just the increment that we need from general fund balance to finish it. We are using money left over from the Novak Street Bridge for a majority of it, so I don't want you to think that we're going to replace a bridge for $500,000, it's just what's, what's left. Again, those, those two pieces at the bottom, greenway development and sidewalk maintenance for motor vehicle privilege tax, those are our normal amounts each year. So a significant amount of maintenance in terms of our transportation infrastructure. Powell Bill Funds, we, we talked about using some of that Powell Bill fund balance, you'll see that in the second project, the Old Salisbury Road Fail, Failure Improvement. So intend to fully, fully fund the scope of that project with money that's remaining right now in, in the fund, and then again, street resurfacing at $2.1 million a year from Powell Bill funding. So I'll flip back here, so we'll do $2.1 million in the street resurfacing every year out of this, and then an additional $1.5 million every other year. I know there are significant street resurfacing needs, and we will see those in the unfunded section, so this is just a very small portion of, of what is represented in terms of transportation, asset, and infrastructure maintenance needs.
Scott, so what's the rough cost now per mile for street resurfacing?
We'll have to get back to you on that one, Mayor. I would tell you, some of the resurfacings that we're doing are beyond the regular resurfacing, where we're going all the way down to the base, redoing the base, and that is significantly more expensive. For instance, the Lowry Street project that's been talked about is much more significant. I think the last time we were looking at just straight resurfacing, it was in the $90,000 per mile, but we'll come back with a, a per lane mile number for you. Councilmember Cipio?
Yes, I think about a year ago, we had a report on, I want to say the 10 most severe bridges that we need to be focusing on. Any of them included in this bridge money or not?
So the one bridge there, I believe is the First Street Bridge, that $300,000, what you see above that, the $3 million is the design for several of those bridges. We do not have the construction funding for that. If you look in, were to look in the exhibits, it's roughly $30 million worth of bridges, and we don't have $30 million worth of available current resources in the capital plan to make all of those replacements. So the West Lakeview Drive Bridge is already under design, and we are proposing to construct it using some balances and additional fund balance here. The rest of those bridges, we would need a significant amount of additional resources in order to rebuild those.
So right now, we're just in a holding pattern with all of those 10 bridges? I think it was about 10 bridges that were identified as problematic.
There is priority bridge maintenance money there to extend the life of those bridges as long as we can, but yes, ma'am, we would be in need of additional funding for the construction components of replacing those bridges.
And is the new infrastructure dollars from the federal government something we're looking into to see if we can address those bridges?
My answer to that would be absolutely. Any money that we can get from the bipartisan infrastructure law, some of that, as, as you saw the presentation last week, is competitive in nature, and I'm sure there are hundreds of cities and counties looking for billions and billions of dollars to rebuild infrastructure. So to the extent that we can apply for those, absolutely, we will, and bridges are at the top of the list of things to apply for.
I think you said this, Scott, but, but I'm trying to absorb a lot, so clarify for me. The street resurfacing alternate years, do we only do resurfacing alternate years, or the funding piece is only in alternate years?
A portion of the funding piece only happens in alternating years. So we do resurfacing contracts, we make money available each year, but as you, and I will show you again, it will be $2 million annually in Powell Bill funding going forward, and then $1.5 million every other year. So one year, you'll have $2.5 million, next year, you'll have $3.5 million.
So we supplement the Powell Bill money every other year?
Yeah.
Okay? And just to follow up to Councilmember Cipio's question, all of the figures that we're seeing assume no money coming in from an infrastructure bill, is that correct?
For these figures, yes, sir.
Okay.
So moving on, again, had some, some pictures to break up the monotony here. The West Lakeview Bridge, or what you can see of it, is underwater on the bottom left. Just when we talked about priority bridge maintenance, you see those concrete spalling with the rebar sticking out of it. You try and catch that before it gets to a level that it has to be replaced, and then the picture on the right is Lowry Street. You can see the extreme deterioration on the roadside. Moving a little further along, stormwater is not part of the general fund, it is its own enterprise fund, but we do have significant stormwater issues. Part of the need for, for capital funding and stormwater may include a future discussion about the need to increase the stormwater fee, which I believe has not been increased in more than a decade. So what you see here is funding what the cash flow pro forma will basically allow us to fund and, and stay within the, the areas that we need to be with respect to our current bond covenants. So this is a very standard look at what we can replace in stormwater. You will see in the unfunded section, there are several projects that have been identified by the Stormwater or Field Operations Department, Stormwater Division, and need to have some conversations about how to make funding available for several of those.
Mayor?
Scott?
Yes. Does this level of expenditure represent the stormwater fund staying constant, or are we depleting that, or are we adding to it?
It's a more difficult question than that, and I'll try not to give a difficult answer. We are updating the stormwater pro forma right now. In terms of where the fund balance will be, it's not depleting the fund balance. The issue is the calculations we're required to keep because of the bond covenants, and it's not dropping below those requirements of the bond covenants. We have cash in the fund, but based on the amount of operating expenses, operating revenues, and how that calculation is done, we don't have capacity to use that money without exceeding those thresholds required in the bond covenants.
And what, what are those thresholds?
We'll get that back to you. It's a very difficult series of calculations, but we'll get you a summary of it.
Scott?
Mr. Tesh, what's the city yard remediation?
I will, I will get back to you on that one as well. That is a, a long description of a project that has been in process for years and years and years, and we'll get you the exact phases of it, but there are portions of city yard that were built on top of hazardous materials dump sites, and so I, I will, we'll get an update for you as to 2027 and what we're proposing there. But there are lots of stormwater requirements relative to what that property was used for before we even got a hold of it.
But it looks like that we're not doing anything for four years, and then all of a sudden, we're going to do something, as opposed to, is there something we should be doing every year to remediate or, or not?
I will get the answer back to you. It may be that there are already appropriations available and that they're using that money, and that a more substantial project is being planned a few years out, but we will, we'll get that back to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Larson? Thank you, Mayor. Scott, could you give a little elaboration on drainage improvement on private property, how that works?
I can get you a response. That's the 7030 project, and currently, I'm going to look to the city attorney, I think there may be a moratorium on this per some issues that are happening. So we're showing this as part of the plan, but that $250,000 could be ultimately recycled into other projects if it were determined that we can no longer do that.
And we expect something from the state legislature on that soon?
It's part of your legislative package for this year, so yes.
Right, thank you.
So more pictures to break up the monotony. I'm sure we all know what stormwater looks like, but for the public, I think they normally see probably the two pictures that are on the left and the bottom right in terms of flooding. Flooding causes significant issues as well as pipe failures within the road systems, and so just to remind us, there are significant needs there, and stormwater issues not only affect you when you're driving your car, but they will close the road entirely if we don't get to it in timely fashion.
Scott, got a question. How much, how much of this is Utilities Commission's responsibility to address, and how much of that is ours? And I assume this falls under the same category of infrastructure improvement grant.
So what we are talking about with this part of the presentation is stormwater only and does not fall under the purview of the Utilities Commission. So the water and sewer pipes would be theirs, but the stormwater infrastructure is strictly the city's.
Thank you.
That is not to say that there aren't several projects where we do both at the same time, but yeah. Moving on and continuing into other areas, general government, again, you see that facility renewal, that is for roofs, HVAC units, for all general government buildings, so think City Hall, City Hall South, things that happen at Lowry Street or the city yard. We do have individual sites for what's in '24. The other numbers are more generally what we are projecting further out, but are part of the plan. Sustainability, so a solar PV system using two-thirds funding, I believe the, the first iteration of that is going to be approved for potentially the Bryce A. Stewart Roof, but additional funding to be made available in future years for additional projects. We are recommending, again, general fund balance, I'll draw your attention, that $300,000 actually in the proposed '23 capital budget for additional facility, facility security improvements to be taking place. We will get you the individual details on those, but that is a multi-year project. The next series, NCMLC funding, this is all IS network and equipment infrastructure, and we fund it using leasing. I won't spend a whole lot of time on, on this slide from a community development perspective. These are what's in the capital plan, and you see the note at the bottom, exclusively funded by federal grants and program income for those grants, so this does not include any additional local money for affordable housing or other types of community development capital.
Scott, can you go back one slide for me?
Sure.
So the information systems budget numbers, those are lease payment numbers or acquisition?
Those are the acquisition costs. Yeah, we put the acquisition costs, when you see the capital plan, there's a section below that that shows the operating costs, and we show the lease payments as operating costs. From a public assembly facilities perspective, in FY '23, $1 million worth of fairgrounds fund balance being used for some priority maintenance needs, specifically the roofs and on a few buildings, as well as structural repairs to some of the buildings at Yesterday Village. Those include roofs, woodwork, other foundational issues, as well as some funding needed for interior renovations at the annex. Most of that is maintenance in nature, not a lot of additional amenity or improvement taking place in that. I will note that we are recommending moving roughly 200, excuse me, $2.5 million as part of the ARPA framework through the general fund, and then ultimately moving that back to the fairgrounds fund, so that's been to council. This is using a million of that $2.5 million for basically immediate maintenance needs. And then the convention center capital is, per the agreement, the $250,000 that we make available every year. Just a couple of pictures there, you can see issues from, from water coming through the roofs, as well as missing tin roof tiles and, and the need for additional woodworking. I'll stop there, and I'll say, from what we just looked at, there's not a lot of new in that. That is very much maintain to the best of our ability what we currently have. The next section is unfunded capital needs that were requested by departments, and it is a mismatch of additional maintenance that we absolutely cannot fund at this point without additional resources, and some new amenities that we know that the community needs. And so we will go through these at a summary level. There is, in one of the exhibits, a line item by line item so that you can see the individual projects. So we will show it again by focus area, and then another summary by project type to help the public get a handle on this very large number that we're going to show of $1.2 billion in unfunded. It is, again, departmental requests and includes It is, again, departmental requests and includes a lot of projects that we could not do in six years if we had $1.2 billion, billion dollars, and even if we wanted to, but is representative of the needs and desires in different areas. So looking at it from a strategic focus area perspective, we see that a majority of it is in transportation infrastructure. We're going to see that that's a lot of that is in sidewalks and road intersection and widening projects, but a majority of the unfunded requests from departments you see are from DOT. Safe and secure community, we'll see some fire facilities that the fire chief is requesting for future needs. And down the list, it's probably easier, as we begin to talk about this, to say, you know, what does this include? And it is, the pictures on the top left come directly out of the Deferred Recreation Maintenance Assessment. That map kind of in the middle is a map from the NPO of all of the sidewalks and other pedestrian infrastructure projects that they were looking at as part of a planning process. Again, we'll see nearly $30 million worth of bridge replacement needs, and I believe that's the Glade Street Bridge, just as a representative photo. Picture of Fifth Street from the Journal a year or two ago, just to show kind of what street resurfacing needs can look like for the average driver. On the far right at the bottom, the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative. We know that that has a significant funding gap at this point, so we are really across the board in terms of recreation needs, community development needs, and transportation needs in this full listing. So again, trying to break down that $1.2 billion into a more manageable idea, to more than a half a billion of it is in sidewalk construction and repair. A lot of that in creating new sidewalk infrastructure. Part of that comes through the NPO when we look for funding for it when we can from federal sources and we have a match.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can you answer the question? I'm not sure what goes into livable cities versus transportation. I thought things like sidewalks, walkability, bike lanes and that sort of thing fell into the livable cities. So can you help me understand what goes where?
When you say livable cities, you mean the livable neighborhoods?
Livable neighborhoods, I'm sorry.
Livable neighborhoods technically encompasses our community development and recreation areas. There are things like sidewalks that really make the community more livable but are considered transportation infrastructure, so we put them in quality transportation instead of in livable neighborhoods, many times because they're funded through transportation bonds or through federal money that comes through transportation avenues. So I wouldn't get too caught up on technically where they're housed. It's more of an understanding that there are a lot of sidewalk needs and requests that this money can be, respective of a citizen calls in and says, I would really like a sidewalk, and we note it down, and we'll do kind of a high-level cost estimate of what are not only the immediate needs, but what are the requests as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. So looking down that list, nearly $300 million worth of road improvement projects. So we've taken some of those intersections and road widenings, I believe, and merged them together. Street resurfacing by itself, more than $100 million worth of needs, based on, again, that cost per mile multiplied out by the number of lane miles we have that are in need of resurfacing. We obviously do not in the plan have $100 million worth of funding, so that is an area that has been at the top of the strategic plan for many years, and I think is something that every city struggle with, struggles with because you see it on everyone's radar. Again, fire stations and facilities, there are several new fire stations in the unfunded section. Ultimately, we will determine whether those make it into the draft capital plan as unfunded, but the fire chief has looked at things that we could not build within the six-year horizon if we wanted to, but is looking at potential additional population growth and things like that. So we will work through the data on how those requests are being made and ultimately determine when those assets are needed. We have the streetcar on there. In different iterations, the streetcar has been in the unfunded section. There's a study going on now for a north-south connector. Once that study is done, we'll have a better number to update, but we'll continue to leave the plug number, knowing that that has been a request and a noted need in the transportation area. Showing the full, what we know now, gap for Choice Neighborhoods of a little over $46 million. So I believe we will need to identify $8 million of that very quickly here in the next month, and the additional component of that would have to be worked on in additional phases over the course of the next three to four years. Councilmember Cipio, there is the bridge replacement number that you asked about. Again, we have a listing of those bridges that we are working on, and they include, let's see here, First Street, Sprague Street, Glade Street, Old Greensboro Road, Crafton Valley Road, Northwest Boulevard, and Swam Road. So we do have that list. We will be applying for federal funding, but the construction component of that is nearly $30 million, all unfunded. Fairgrounds improvements, so there was a master plan done at the Winston-Salem Fairgrounds several years ago. I don't remember the exact year. You saw a little bit of funding in the fairgrounds to take care of some immediate maintenance needs, but substantial outstanding needs in terms of the improvements that were recommended as part of the master plan, which would take care of both maintenance issues but also make the site much more usable and friendly to fairgoers, people who are renting the facilities for all kinds of events. $25 million worth of kind of pedestrian, bike, and infrastructure improvements, so we separated those from the road improvements. Another $19 million in recreation and parks improvements. Again, some of those directly in maintenance, but some of those expansions or renovations to current facilities that we have. Stormwater on this list, again, stormwater generally funded by the stormwater fund, but roughly $15 million worth of unfunded needs in stormwater. I will tell you, at Lowry Street, the $10 million of that represents the roof on the part of the building that we have not replaced. That number continues to grow each year as construction costs climb. We'll stop here. We had a picture of the ballpark a couple of slides before. There are some improvements that Major League Baseball will be requiring us to make in order to get to a certain level that they deem necessary for us to continue operations. That number right now is a plug number. There is a study that's happening, and we will have a better idea, but this is kind of the best high-level estimate we have at this point, and wanted to put it on council's radar because it may be that it's mandatory to fund this going forward in order to keep the ballpark operating with a minor league baseball team.
Question, Mayor.
Mr. Scott, on the Lowry Street, that's the building, the Public Works Building. How old is that building?
I don't know how old the building is. We will get back to you on that. There was a renovation of a portion of the building in the last five to 10 years. I don't know how old the remaining structure is, but we can get you that information back.
Yes, I'd like to know, just like you stated, what was the condition of the building when we got it? How much did we invest to improve it so we could, you know, use it? And where are we now, over the course of us opening, cutting the ribbon, on the conditions, the maintenance of that building, whether it's the roof or anything else? Mostly I keep hearing about is the roof, so that's what I'm interested in. Thank you.
We will get you that information. And then a couple of projects down here at the bottom that we just threw into a miscellaneous other category that include an HVAC unit at Bowman Gray Stadium that's needed and some additional improvements in parking decks for elevator modernization and some basic maintenance that needs to be done. So that adds up to the $1.2 billion, looking at it from a summary level. Again, there's a list of these individual projects, but there are significant needs in street resurfacing, bridge maintenance and replacement, as well as recreation and parks assets that simply we cannot fund. More than $150 million worth of maintenance that we don't have the ability to program. So we'll stop there, and the next section is going to go into what we've defined as the other unfunded capital needs. But again, these came from one-on-ones with council members. So again, same kind of summary, looking at the strategic focus areas and projects. And then I will stop and say here, in many of these cases, we have not designed or created full scopes for these projects, so some of these numbers are not scientific in nature. We have tried to apply some type of square footage to it, but many of them, if we don't know what the scope was, we put a number on it that is kind of our best estimate. So don't hold us to some of these. By focus area, so economic vitality and diversity with roughly $60 million out of the $200 million in needs. You'll see one, the majority of that is in one site that we will discuss and jump into the individual needs here, but to draw your attention, a lot in livable neighborhoods. That is respective of a number for affordable housing that is unfunded as well, and then much lower total numbers in the healthy environment and quality transportation area. That quality transportation one mostly being reflective of, a lot of it is in the unfunded section from transportation and field operations already. So again, going through this list, the $40 million at the top, I believe there was a site that may be specific to this, but looking at a sports arena, retail center, and performing arts center that would include, and the sports arena would include an ice arena with 5,000 seats. Again, this is a very large project. $40 million is our best guess at what it would take investment-wise to create those types of assets altogether. Next on the list, Columbia Heights redevelopment. There is a plan that is being done. That $10 million is representative generally of what we think the city's contribution to that program might be with significant amounts of private development taking place as well. The transformational center that has come to council, that $6 million. We did have another council member that was interested in the Skyland School property and whether or not we could do some similar job training and other types of transformational activities at that location. We will say, again, that $6 million plug number, we just made it equal to what the other one was. There has not been an assessment of that building where we would know what the current condition is, what would need to be done to it, and how it would be used. And then the Fireman's Hall of History at $1 million there, totaling $63 million in new development from an economic vitality and development perspective. There are two pages worth of recreation and parks improvements, so, and I will not go through these in scope and detail, but an additional recreation center, several potential new parks, changes to the, or upgrades to the Happy Hill track to make it a competitive track center, additional upgrades to Winston Lake Golf Course, several parks there, getting additional enhancements in terms of facilities in some cases, the recreation center, in other cases, just additional outdoor amenities, up to and including amphitheaters. We do have a number here. One council member had asked about artifacts that are being returned to Bathabra as part of history. There is a building where they store these. That building is currently in the floodplain and is not operable to the public, essentially. So we do have a plug number. If we wanted to take all of those artifacts that we're getting back, as well as the ones we have stored, and create an opportunity for the public to see those, what that amount could look like, I will stop at the South Ward Skate Park and say that this was a little bit more of a conversation around additional teen facilities as well, so we've represented it in terms of one particular project, but there was a conversation with a council member of that ward citywide about just the additional need for youth to have areas for programming and to be at and to stay out of additional trouble. Quarry Park Development, this is a putting course that could potentially be put at the Quarry Park. Think of it as a very elaborate mini golf. So that number is representative of the development cost for that on the current Quarry Park site. And then we have additional improvements to current parks at Larry Little, Malloy, and I believe the Malloy Phase Two number is the additional money that's needed. There is $400,000 in the state budget. That does not include that $400,000 that is already funded and additional improvements at Haynes Hosery for the walking track and bleachers and signage at several parks that would be for people to understand about healthy lifestyles and how they're using the facilities that we have. I would say, again, this is about $45 million, a majority of which is new infrastructure in addition to what we currently have. So thinking about that in terms of more than $8 or $10 million worth of unfunded maintenance needs, just trying to get a feel and direction, as the manager said from council, about where our priorities lie in maintenance versus new assets. Continuing through here, again, affordable housing, that $82.5 million, several council members had on their list, affordable housing is very important. That number is created from potentially trying to create 750 units per year over the course of the next six years, net of the money that is already being appropriated for it. Additional community development in specifically the East Ward for housing restoration programs and curb appeal and signage programs. From the transportation side, these are two transportation projects that came up that were outside of the scope of what our DOT and Field Operations and Engineering Departments had. One is as a roadway extension for Egress and the other to create a pedestrian crosswalk at 421 and Jonestown Road. The last piece we have there, the current stormwater pond at the Wake Forest Innovation Quarter, knowing that there are some outstanding needs, although I know there are legal considerations with that as well, that came up in conversation, so we wanted to put it on the list. We'll briefly say that we met with council members. Some of what you said was already in the unfunded section. So what I've showed you here are just the new things that came up as part of our one-on-one conversations. The widening of Oak Summit Road was already submitted by the Department of Transportation. Glade Street Bridge was already in what Field Operations has submitted. The gem at Old Town Rec Center was in the unfunded section of the capital plan last year, as was the Hobby Park Phase Two improvements and Ready Mead Infrastructure improvements. So some of those projects were unfunded in prior years and have just been brought across. Wanted to note that they were in that $1.2 billion that was discussed earlier. So changing gears, the first two sections were what do we have in the draft plan and what is potentially funded, the list of unfunded needs, and then essentially the opportunities we have to fund some of those. So again, the discussion around what we have and can make available in terms of revenues and maintenance versus expansion priorities. There is a report that was attached to this, and if you were to look at the tables, this is a summary of the tables in that report. I will tell you, as of Friday, these numbers need to be slightly revised in terms of that free and clear project balances. $8 million of that was the Union Cross Business or Union Cross Temple School Road Project, Area Project. The $3.8 million of that originally came from bonds. Our Chief Financial Officer reached out to Bond Council, and because the debt has not been paid off, $3.8 million of it has to be used for economic development purposes and cannot be used for any purpose. So we did hear from Bond Council on Friday about that, so that you would need to take $3.8 million out of that $8.8. It is still available for economic development purposes, but couldn't be used for transportation or community development as they were part of that bond order. So...
I have a question. Mr. Tesh?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you rewind the tape on that for just a minute?
Sure, absolutely.
Could you just go back and repeat what you're just saying?
Be more than happy to. So that $8.8 million, the $800,000 is in old projects, and that $800,000 can be used for anything. The $8 million comes from the sale that City Council is looking at for the Union Cross Road Project. $3.8 million of economic development bonds were used to buy that land. Because we have not paid off the debt yet, it's 20-year debt, even though you're getting money back, that $3.8 million has to be reused for an economic development purpose per Bond Council because it was originally obligated to that bond order, and the debt hasn't been paid off yet.
So you're saying that the money from the sale of Union Cross can only be used for economic development?
4.2...
4.2 million has.
4.2 million is free and clear and can be used for any purpose you want.
Okay, that's all I need. I'm good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The second part of that table, limited obligation bonds, potential additional capacity in the Debt Service Fund to issue $50 million worth of limited obligation bond debt. There was a question about limited obligation bonds or lobs compared to general obligation bonds, which I believe Assistant City Manager Rao answered last week, as well as our Chief Financial Officer has included an information item here. The general difference, limited obligation bond debt is not voter-approved. That's the main difference. And then on here, we will talk about the American Rescue Plan Framework from the city and why that number is TBD, how much funding is available, and how it might be used. So for all of the projects that are unfunded, $60 million or a little more, depending on how some of that framework gets used. Won't go through this in great amounts of detail. Again, that $8.8 million needs to be... Again, that 8.8 million needs to be, 5 million. The second piece that says project complete and available to reappropriate, there's roughly $600,000 worth of project balances. The Budget Department in November or December, I believe, brought an item that showed unencumbered balances, which created the need to really go through every single project. And so for several months, had gone through many of those projects. We actually used some of that money here this month for some major recreation needs. There's just not a lot that's out there that's not in design. You see down there, the 27.5 million, that is an area, and again, there's backup to this and we can go through it, but those are projects where council has appropriated something for a specific purpose. You may use it for something else, generally it's bond debt, but think of things like Turn is a great example of this. That's a community development project, community development bond money. You could use that money for something else in community development, but it would mean specifically saying, I no longer want to use it on Turn and I would like to use it for something else. So there is a good amount of money in capital projects where there are pots of money where we've identified that we want to do something and have appropriated it for that purpose, but it hasn't taken place yet. So you've got the Union Cross money and about 800, or 4.2 million of the Union Cross money, and about $800,000 worth of old economic development project money that can be used for anything, an additional 600,000 in project balances that are completely done but have to be recycled into the areas they're currently in because of the revenue source, and about $28 million worth of projects where the mayor and city council said, we want to use it for this purpose, and you would really have to make a policy decision to use it for another purpose, but you, if you were so inclined, could do so. The crux of that, there's not a whole lot of money just sitting out there to be used for another purpose. In terms of additional debt, so this is a chart from the city's Financial Management Services Department. There are two lines on here. This is based on the cash flow model for the Debt Service Fund. Essentially, that purple line or the top line is what is happening to the reserves right now, what we expect to happen, and you can see that they are increasing pretty significantly. The red line is what would happen to those reserves if you issued $50 million worth of debt, and what we're talking about, limited obligation bonds. So you can see that the Debt Service Fund, based on how we project this, would hover somewhere in the five to six million range for a while and then begin to rebound out in the 2030s. So indicative of the ability with current resources, no additional tax rate increase, to issue $50 million in limited obligation debt for projects. We're going to talk about ARPA here for a second. Questions with the public, as well as I've tried to present this and hope I have in different meetings, how much is available from that framework? So originally, $51.7 million made available from the federal government. City Council is looking at $20 million of that specifically for housing investments. The $30 million that you'll see on the agenda includes 10 million from the state, so this is just our local piece. Again, that $5.6 million that we are putting back in certain enterprise and special revenue funds because they were hurt during the pandemic, and the rest of those are programs that have already been appropriated, the Recovery Grants Program, employee premium pay, and vaccination programs, again, community violence intervention, and so forth. So roughly $35 million of that ARPA money is already spoken for at this point. What's remaining, roughly $17 million. The transformational nonprofit grant process, that portal opened on Friday. I am happy to say that we are getting calls left and right about it. There is a lot of excitement, as to be expected. So calls, emails, community assistance liaisons, all kinds of interest in that. Whatever we were to make available.
Question? I'm sorry. Do we have an idea yet, Scott, on the 3 million recovery grants program, where we are on that? I have heard anecdotally that there were a lot of people who just didn't qualify for that, so we may have actually over budgeted?
So I will tell you, in the first round, we have signed for the checks to be cut for roughly $200,000. There's another $300,000 worth of applications that are pending additional documentation. We are working with the city's management team to potentially bring forward to you an item in April that would expand the date eligibility only for that, which may make additional eligibility for certain businesses and nonprofits. What we heard was council adopted that in November, and so we said, if you had arrears before November, we would pay them or make that money available. People were applying in January and February and saying, well, I had to pay off several months ago, couldn't get on a payment plan. So we did get some anecdotal feedback that maybe changing the scope of the date of eligibility might help a few businesses, so we will potentially bring that back. To the heart of your question, I think there is a substantial portion of this program that may be recycled back into the framework. I don't think there's $3 million worth of need the way this program is scoped in the community.
Thank you.
So $17 million available. Again, that nonprofit application process will be open for roughly four weeks. I think it closes four weeks from today. Initially in the framework, we had $10.5 million set aside for social and economic assistance. It was fashioned that a majority of that would probably be using our community partners, but that's not to say that council could not elect to do, to use city, to build city assets, or do, or use city employees to provide some of these services. $5 million for the digital divide, I believe we will be coming back to talk about this one. We wanted to use that in the framework with respect to infrastructure, broadband infrastructure. We do not have state authority to do that, and I'll look to Angela. I'm not sure that that's really on the legislative agenda in Raleigh to give cities the opportunity to expand broadband infrastructure.
I'm not aware that it is.
That may be an area where we were looking at infrastructure. We may have other needs in terms of the digital divide and providing training and programming, but it may be an opportunity to look at how that funding source is used. The last piece at the bottom, in different iterations of this framework, we've shown different admin numbers as kind of a plug. That's kind of the plug at the bottom of what existed outside the framework. It can be used for essentially any purpose. So 17 million is remaining in ARPA funding, of which I presume a majority of that will probably be in contracts with community partners to provide social and economic assistance programming. So there isn't a whole lot of opportunity for capital project funding from ARPA, let's So to the discussion part of the presentation, again, the current capital plan uses a majority of our known current resources to address our most current maintenance needs. The question would be, if we were looking at $50 million worth of additional capacity from lobs, and if we were to use any portion of that ARPA framework for city council capital projects, would they need to be more aimed at continuing to address those maintenance needs or providing for additional facilities and assets throughout the community? We will, as part of the process, when we do this alignment with the capital plan that comes in May, show how individual projects align with the city's strategic plan. I have noted, I think in a couple of areas, several of these projects at the bottom, but potential must-fund projects. We talked about ballpark improvements that Major League Baseball may be laying upon us. Again, estimated at $5 million, but until that study is done, not really sure what the final amount would be. We have a current estimate of $1.2 million for an outfit to the 911 Communications Center, moving police, emergency communications to the county building. And then the $8 million, again, respective just of the current phase of the $46 million gap that has been shown for CNI. So we have some high-level maintenance needs, we have some immediate needs that we may not be able to get around in terms of looking at that $50 million in additional project From a staff perspective, the next steps are to take the feedback that you provide to us and finalize a capital plan, building a slate of projects. If the direction is to use that lobs capacity, so what you saw in the draft capital plan, potentially plus the next $50 million worth of highest needs, we would bring that back, hopefully here as part of the budget development process in late May. And again, that would include that debt issuance, but $50 million in lobs could be done without additional tax resources to the public. Believe that's all I've got in terms of slides here, and would love to have any feedback or direction from the council on what you've seen and heard.
Just, Scott, in terms of feedback from the council, obviously some today if you want it, if you want to, but we've got opportunities over the next several weeks to digest all this information and feed it back to you. Am I correct?
Yeah, that is correct, and I would look to the city manager if he would like to make a comment. I believe we had a series of meetings with council members and would probably do the same going forward over the course of the next couple of months.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Tesh, and all of the staff that helped put this together for us today. Maybe I'm wrong, Mr. Garrity, this is the first time we've done it this way, and I think that's, this is great. I just wish we thought of doing this 13 years ago, but we'll take it. Couple of questions. Is it too late to put in request?
It's never too late.
Never too late.
I apologize. I was caught up in fires and other stuff, and if I had a meeting, I don't even remember it. So, you know, charge it to the heart and not the mind and not the heart. Could I, we get, or the council get a summary, historical trend or data, Pareto, of the lobs we've done over the years and/or bonds, Ms. Saunders or any of you, over the years to give the newer council members an idea of what are some of the monies we were asking for over the years to get things done? And maybe do a short description of basically what we use that money for. I mean, we know we did 14, 18, council members McIntosh, Taylor, the mayor, myself, Councilmember Clark, but nobody else knows that. So we need to, I think we need to have that information. And I'd also like for us to research or provide some information on Greensboro, Charlotte. You don't have to do Charlotte, Charlotte's Texas, but Greensboro, Durham, High Point, and Raleigh, as to the size of their bond packages they've been doing over the past, what would you say, Mayor, five, 10 years? 10 years? And the amounts of what basically they called out those bonds to be used for, because that's very important right now in the space we are, because cities are finding that, that's right now, that's the only option we have. If we're, one of the options, probably the primary one, that we have in order to mitigate some of these needs that we have, that we just don't, can't tax the taxpayer right away and say, we're going to increase your taxes five cents because we got to have this. So again, thank you on the presentation, and you'll be hearing from me.
I certainly agree with Mayor Protem. Scott, your staff did a great job, so many numbers here, and you and I talked the other day about the ARPA funds and how we move those and do different things with them. So I congratulate you and your staff on understanding a very complex. Councilmember McIntosh.
Yes, Scott, great work from your staff. First of all, just want to say, if time permits, if staff can pull numbers together, we're going to have a review of the deferred maintenance situation in parks and rec. So we'll dig down into some detail there, so if council members are interested in a little more depth on what those numbers represent. I would like to see future maintenance and staffing costs associated with new projects that are being requested, because we have the capital and then we'll have the ongoing costs that we'll have to pay for every year as we go. So if we can, as much detail, I know that's a tough number, but a swag would be really helpful. Looking at the lob graph, I've just got a question. It looks as if we go for $50 million in 2022, our capacity to do another lob is extremely low for quite some time. Am I reading that right?
Based on the way the projection is done here, if you were to issue $50 million in lobs, there would be no additional capacity to do that in the coming years unless something significantly changed in the economy.
Like for 10 years?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we could do general obligation bonds, which are voter approved.
Yes.
And two-thirds bonds are still.
Which would include needing additional resources.
Yeah.
Just quickly, when we're talking about paving number, paving numbers, the power money and the two-thirds bonds, that all gets split up into eight wards. We each get one eighth of that pie. That's how we've done it in the past. I'm assuming that's how we're looking at it going forward.
Yeah, those two revenue sources are used for the same purpose and are allocated the same.
Right, and they're allocated one eighth around the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark, and then Councilmember Larson.
Just some general comments, and I do like your idea of meeting again with the council members individually to go over some things. First off, we did have a 2014 and a 2018 bond referendums. I think it would be good for the council to see an update. 2014, I know still has a few projects to go, one in my ward, just an update of where we are. I believe, Ms. Saunders, once we issue the bonds, we've got 10 years to spend it. So 10 years would be, now, we didn't issue all of it in 2014, we issued it over a few years, but it'd be good to have an update on that, and also on the 2018, again, an update on where we are. My concern on the 2018, we really had about a two-year pause, you know, the world just stopped for a while with COVID. And my concern is the clock is ticking on that money, too. Thirdly, on ARPA, I believe the clock ticks on that, too, and we actually heard a few comments in Washington about, well, if you people aren't going to spend the money, we'll just bring it back. So I think it would be nice to have some information on what the timeframes are on that, and I'm concerned, can we meet that? Because I'm thinking it's a 2026, maybe date, something like that. There's no way in the next four years, I think, some of that money could be spent on what we wanted on, yeah, go ahead.
I can address this. So the money, the ARPA money has to be obligated by December 31, 2024, and expended by December 31, 2026, except for that $31.3 million.
Okay.
That we are using for public safety salaries. That money does not have those same requirements.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of spending dates.
And the last thing I would comment, I think there needs to be some realism put to these numbers. By the way, I have been a vocal opponent of the streetcar system, but the numbers I have seen have been 100 to 200 million, not the 50 million you got in there. I just have concerns with that being listed. I don't think anyone's going to push to spend 25 million at the fairgrounds. I just think we need to get a little realistic on what really is out there. I am concerned with the amount of deferred maintenance. Those are real dollars. When the road washes out, you got to fix it. When the roof leaks, you got to fix it, things of that sort. But I think we need to be a little more realistic on what we really want and how we're going to do it, because goodness gracious, that's a lot. Here are our wants and here are what we can afford, and that's a huge, huge gap, and that means we got some tough decisions. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. We do see some pathways to get through this, and I appreciate you sort of laying out a few options of how we can fund some of this. I am curious to follow up sort of on Councilmember Clark's comment about the last two bonds, and I know this isn't specifically addressing the 14 and the 18 bond referendums that we had, but we promised the public on those two bonds, several activities or projects, and I don't know that we fulfilled all of those yet or have, particularly the 14. I'm thinking particularly in my case, Brewer Sidewalk, Brewer Street Sidewalk Project. And I've had some questions from residents about bond-funded projects that they voted on, both in 14 and in 18. And I'm wondering if his staff would be available to pull out, maybe in line with what Clark was talking about, you know, what we've promised and have not fulfilled yet in those two bond projects particularly. And maybe they're going to have to receive some priority as we look ahead in the next few years, either for ARPA funding or for additional bond projects. But could somebody help me understand what may be still pending out there that we need to fulfill promises that we haven't fulfilled yet?
We will absolutely look at the 2014 and 2018 referendum, those projects that have been completed, those that are in construction, and those that are still either in design or have not been designed, that were planned. We'll get that information back to you.
I know some of them have to deal with cost now, the cost of value engineering. We value engineered out parts of projects that still, I think, were worthy, and people sort of expected them to be done, and they have not been because of that financial limitation.
To the extent that we value engineered a project down from the original design component of it, I'm not sure the ability, and I'd look at the city manager, for us to go back and determine the individual components of each one of the projects that was value engineered. If you have specific questions on specific projects, just.
Well, you've only, one of you've got the Fireman's Hall of History, which was valued, engineered out of the last capital campaign. engineered out of the last capital campaign. Brewer Sidewalk was valued, engineered out of the 14 bond referendum, and I don't know what else. I mean, there was also, I think, a shelter in Parkland that I've heard about that people thought we were going to get in the last bond referendum. I'm just trying to get a clarification. I was not here for the bond referendum for 14, nor were many of my colleagues, so how it affects, you know, projects in their order to probably also be of some interest.
I will do my best to go back and look at the original scopes of those projects and see what did not take place.
Right.
Some of those are going to be difficult in terms of, we made an amount of available for a project. It was then designed by an architect. The architect missed the number on construction, and then it was value engineered back out. We'll have to see.
Right. There are questions of detail, certainly, about whether, you know, what the materials are, details of construction. I'm thinking more of specific aspects of the project that may not have been funded. Some of them we've picked up, Quarry Park, a bunch of them we've picked up in subsequent allocations, you know, additional bond allocations, and some of them are protected in your proposals here, so they're being addressed. But I think we need to call them out, so give them some priority, perhaps. That's what the public expected from us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Great presentation, lots of dollars out there. Luckily, Scott said lots of needs out there, and as Councilmember Clark said, not as much dollars as we need, so Scott, great job. Thank you so much.
Sounds like my budget.
Anything else from the manager today?
I'll see everybody back here at 7 o'clock.
I think a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
Motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.